I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're recording here. It's good. This evening. So after the pledge leaves us everybody, the agendas are over here on the side. It's a little lengthy, but what our practice will be is if anybody has any questions in the audience about the agenda, any particular subject, you're welcome to, you know, state your name and ask any kind of questions. If not, then we'll just, we just go past that and then we'll start with the reorganization. Okay? All right, so if there's another thing. So we'll start with the resolution regarding the village board meetings, setting the meeting schedule for the village board meetings for 2023, '24 at 7:00 p.m. Regular meetings will begin the first Monday of the month with public comment. In case of a holiday, the meeting will be the next day. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No against, okay. Resolution saying the meeting schedule for the village board work session for 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Work session will be held on the third Monday of the month with public comment. In case of holiday, the meeting will be the next day. Have a motion?
This one?
Have a second?
Discussion.
You, you give the second?
No, I want to have a discussion.
You had the second first.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion. So what happens if we have a conflict with the planning board or ZBA on the Tuesday? It's a holidays Monday and Tuesday, planning board or ZBA is supposed to meet. Do we have a contingency? Will we move it to an hour earlier? Just trying to figure that out.
Well, let's take a look at the calendar and then we can make, take appropriate action on that.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we move it to, or meeting to a Wednesday or something like that. We have to look, as I know, they also have court, so we just need to figure out, we're not stepping on anybody's toes.
Okay.
So, but for now, we'll set that and if there's a special case, then we'll make that adjustment as we go when we look at the calendar.
Okay.
Okay.
Planning board meetings are on the opposite Tuesdays, so.
Right, it's good for July, Tuesday.
So it should be.
Yeah, just in case, because they have special meetings from time to time.
Right. Well, again, with all the meetings and, you know, requests for people using the facility, we need to come up with that 12-month master plan, you know. We'd have to get the calendar and write it all out so it's visible for everybody and also use Microsoft Office to have every calendar, make that somewhat of the official calendar for appointments or people, again, who want to use the village hall. So we'll get that set up shortly, because all the requests are coming in since summertime is approaching. Okay, so we had a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three oh.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interrupt for a second?
Yes, sir.
On the first item in regard to the, the meeting dates.
Yes.
Christine and I both noticed that there wasn't an official motion. You discussed it, it wasn't a motion and a second.
Okay.
It was a call for a vote, but there hadn't been the first prerequisite motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so on for the meeting, just to make a recap, I guess, so we can go for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three zero. Thanks, guys. The resolution setting the year-end meeting for the village board for 2024 will be February 19th. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Planning board meeting resolution setting the meeting schedule for the village planning board for 2023, '24 at the village hall at 7:00 p.m. Will be the first Tuesday and third Tuesday of the month. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Resolution setting the meeting schedule for the village zoning board of appeals for '23, '24 to be held at the village hall on the first Thursday and third Thursday of the month as necessary. Have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Motion passes three zero. Architectural review board meeting, setting the meeting schedule for the architectural review board for 2023, '24 to be held at the village hall as necessary based on applications. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Ethic board resolution setting the meeting schedule for the ethics review board for 2023, '24 to be held at the village hall on an ad need is, as, on an as-needed basis. Questionnaire will be completed by all employees filed in a sealed envelope on an annual basis and returned to the village clerk by March 30th of each calendar year. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Payroll resolution, send the first payroll pay period on March 1st, 2023, '24. Pay periods are Wednesday to Thursday. Pay date is on Friday.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion passes three zero. Resolution adopting the policy that the village department heads are expected to attend village board meetings if needed and as requested by the village mayor. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes three zero. Resolution adopting the policy that the village board members will approve initial or signed bills as ordered by the village treasurer in accordance with the biweekly payment schedule. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Three zero. Resolution adopting a policy that the attorneys are available to the village elected official chairpersons of the ZBA, ethics and planning board in the village and to the department heads only. All other employees or board members must receive prior approval from the village mayor prior to contacting an attorney for the village. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Resolution amending the adopting the employee handbook effective 6/30 of 2023. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Volunteer boards, resolution adopting a policy that all members of the volunteer boards must be ready, willing, and able to attend all scheduled meetings of said board. In the event a member is unable to attend a meeting prior to notification, must be made to the volunteer board's chairperson, secretary, or village clerk. Yearly attendance records for all members shall be submitted to the chairperson of said board to the village clerk no later than the 15th, February 15th of each year. Any member having missed more than one quarter of scheduled meetings within a calendar year may be dismissed from the board before the end of the appointed term. Chairperson or volunteer board will be part of the interview process for all new applicants. New appointees must complete mandatory training with 60 days of appointment. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
We pay for their training, correct?
Most of it's free and it's online, but if they had to, yes, we'd pay for it.
Just clarify?
A resolution adopt, oh, did we vote?
We did vote.
Okay, do we have a vote, please?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Resolution adopting a policy that the planning and zoning and ethic and architecture volunteer review boards will attend annual training up to six hours per year pertaining to their responsibility and additional training is welcome. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
All right, have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Use or rental of village facilities, resolution adopting a policy that all applications for use and or rental of village-owned facilities will be made to the village clerk office at least 60 days prior to the event. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Resolution adopting a policy that the village clerk office will keep a master calendar of all the use and rentals of village-owned facilities. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Resolution adopting a policy that the village clerk will submit any or request to the village board for authorization and approval along with proper insurance rider policy for use rentals of all village-owned facilities. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes three zero. Mileage reimbursement, resolution adopting a policy designating the mileage allowance for the federal IRS rate per mile for official village business and any request for mileage reimbursement will be submitted on a travel expense form which shall include the following information, odometer reading, destination, purpose of trip, provided that that reimbursement shall be automatically adjusted to the IRS rate. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Use of village vehicle, resolution adopting a policy regarding the village vehicles shall be used for official village business only. Personal use of any village vehicle is strictly prohibited. No person other than the officers or employees authorized by this resolution shall be the operator or passenger in the vehicle. The chief of police, detective, highway superintendent, village mayor, village building inspector are the only officers or employees authorized to use village vehicle outside normal work schedule. A village employee only when serving as the acting police chief, acting highway superintendent, or acting building inspector is authorized to use a village vehicle outside the normal work schedule. If it is inspected, expected that each employee will be served, serving as the acting police chief or highway superintendent or building inspector for more than 48 consecutive hours, no other authorized or utilized village vehicle shall be permitted to their family members or non-employees to travel in village-owned vehicles. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Will this cover when our DPW guys have to work, you know, two, three days at a time on their shifts because of snowstorms?
Yes, that's, that's normal.
Okay.
You know, and in most of those cases, it could even be a state emergency we can enact and that, you know, that's, only it's really after hours, the day where everybody would go home and at 3:30, you know, one of our employees decided to take a truck off. That's what we're.
Okay, I'm just double checking and I'm making sure the guy's covered.
Yep, absolutely. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Petty cash account resolution adopting a policy for petty cash accounts is filed on bill clerk, $100, police department, $150, mayor, $150, Justice Department, $150, and the building inspector, $50. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Village holiday, resolution adopting the village state and federal holidays as follows, Martin Luther King Day, I'm sorry, yeah, let me see, Martin Luther King's birthday, Lincoln's birthday, Memorial Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve is a half a day, Christmas Day, and New Year's Eve is a half a day.
And New Year's Day?
And then you have New Year's Day. Have a motion, please.
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Village office hours, resolution adopting the regular office hours for the village hall are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Resolution recognizing the hours for the DPW department, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Motion?
Motion.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Village officials elected, resolution recognizing the following, elected officials, mayor, full-time elected Thomas Tivenko, village trustees, part-time elected Susan Walzki and Donna Jackeruso.
Captain clerk.
Yeah, and we have village clerk, full-time, which is an appointed position. We have the village trustees, part-time elected Joseph McKay and Stephen Smith, and DPW superintendent, full-time appointed, is Christopher Martino. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
The mayor physician, physician is full-time now?
Well, I'm working full-time.
Oh, I know. You're working overtime.
No OT. The question would be then, what, is it part-time, full-time?
No, I don't know if there's any other legal parameters around, it was always a part-time decision, right? And it was a full-time decision?
It was part-time, but, you know, putting in.
Oh, no, absolutely.
You know, so.
Full-time job, no math.
Just noting that it is a full-time spot.
Just making sure that there's no benefits that we would be liable for as a village.
None.
No offense.
None taken. None taken. And that's happened before in other municipalities where certain boards did end up with benefits, but, you know, that's one thing that we don't do, so.
Okay, just, we were just checking on that.
Don't worry, I won't order Hawaii or anything, paid vacation or something.
Can you take us?
All right, so we had the motion and the second discussion. Any other further discussion?
No, good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes three zero. Village board liaison, resolution appointing village board members, that's liaisons. And then when we add two other trustees, we'll rework this list a little bit and spread the load out a little bit. So for the Blooming Grove ambulance, it's myself, Tom Tivenko, H2O is our water and sewer contractor, Susan Walzki, Rance is Susan Walzki, historian, Susan Walzki, Washerville School District, Donna Jackeruso, emergency management, Thomas Tivenko, Monal Farde Park and Donna Jackeruso, DPW, Susan Walzki, information technology, Susan Walzki, and actually I changed that to Donna Jackeruso for information technology, and website, Facebook admin is Donna Jackeruso, personnel is Donna Jackeruso, planning board and zoning board liaison is Donna Jackeruso, police is Susan Walzki, event committee is Susan Walzki, safety, health, and training is myself, Tom Tivenko, senior citizens, Donna Jackeruso, water sewer billing is Donna Jackeruso, building department is Susan Walzki, the volunteer organization, and just to name a few, if there's others out there that they would also be included as they either are created or we find out about more, is the Kiwanis Club, the Knights, the Chamber of Commerce. We have the Lions Club and any other organization is Donna Jackeruso. To the Blooming Grove Town Board is Donna Jackeruso, Chamber of Commerce is Susan, yep, Susan Walzki, got the old company, and beautification committee will be Susan Walzki. So have that form of a motion, please.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Non-union appointed officials and employees, a resolution adopting a non-union village employee 2023, '24 wage and benefit policy. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Resolution recognizing the following appointed persons to be designated positions for the 2023, '24. Mayor's office appointment, full-time, part-time, Susan Walzki, deputy mayor, part-time with the salary allocation. The secretary, full-time, is Joan Oram. Village treasurer, full-time, is to be determined. Village acting treasurer, part-time, is Leslie Tillison. Accounts payable clerk, full-time, to be determined. Village clerk appointment, full-time, deputy clerk, full-time, will be determined. That also covers registrar for vital statistics, and the deputy registrar for vital statistics is Patricia Nunez. Do I have that form of a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Village justice appointment, full-time slash part-time, is a resolution recognizing the following appointment of clerk, village justice, Patricia Nunez, as the clerk village of the village justice, full-time position. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Village department heads, resolution recognizing the following, the village department heads for 2023, '24. Christine Shankman as village clerk, Christopher Martin as Department of Public Works. The treasurer is to be determined, and Brian Zakaro has, in the police department.
Does it say Martino?
Did I say Martine? I'm sorry, Martino. Sorry, Mr. Martino. Sometimes I think to call you Martin, I don't know why. My apologies. Have that in form of a motion, oh, actually, one more, we have another. The building department, full-time, part-time, code enforcement officer, fire code enforcement, building inspector, MS4 code enforcement, full-time, John Terry, and Susan Salo is part-time building inspector, fire code inspector. Let's see, village clerk, as mentioned, is village highway department, MS4 administrator, Christopher Martino, full-time custodial worker, village hall, police, part-time, is Linda Steinberger, village clerk, full-time, is Christine Shankman, village justice is part-time, is Stephen Smith and Joseph McKay, police department, full-time, is Brian Zakaro. Other village assignments, the clerk, village foils and record access officer, village clerk, the record management officer, mayor or designated village emergency management director, chief of police, gain of chance officer is the chief of police. Village justice, again, part-time, is Joseph McKay and Stephen Smith, and DPW superintendent, again, is Christopher Martino. More of a motion, please? I covered that, right? My apologies.
Marriage official.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one second, folks. So after the chief of police gains of chance, you have the mayor for the marriage official and mayor is the budget officer of mayor and village board to join the conference of mayors and attend monthly annual business session along with the association of villagers. The village board also attends classes, seminars for certificate and emergency management preparedness. Village clerk to attend NICO meetings as required for educational and networking with other municipal clerks. The village treasurer to attend NICO meetings as required for educational and networking with other treasurers. Village historian, DPW superintendent, appointed, MS4 administrator. Have a form of motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
The village historian should join, I think it's called APNIS, which is the Association of Municipal Historians of New York State.
Okay. And what's the initials?
APNIS?
APNIS.
That is what it was, it may have changed over the years.
If you get some info on that, I'd be interested to shoot out an email. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Minnesota village board recognizing the following members of the village planning board, zoning board of appeals, board of ethics, architectural review board, committee, planning and zoning committee, and secretary for the planning board, ZBA and comprehensive planning. So the planning board, five members is, planning board of appeals is a five-year term. The dates on these terms are being looked at because there are a number of positions that were filled and they all started at the same time, so we have to go backwards and investigate the people that they were replaced and when those appointments came in. So Bob, if you happen to have any of that info, it would be good to have.
I don't have a whip, but I can, I can collect it for you.
Cool. So we have Robert Bukowski, we have Joan Wiley, Jaclyn Davis Norris, Shereen Gustaf, and Thomas Gildy, and that's your planning board. Your zoning board of appeals, we have two openings at the moment, one happened to be the chairperson, and we have Michelle Rivera, Danny Loza, Ryan Osborne, and so we'll be advertising for those positions.
Can you give them the dates?
Yeah, and the dates will also be reviewed.
I have the dates.
I'm sorry?
I have the dates.
You have the dates, perfect, so we can make a quick fix on that. Thank you. So for the board of ethics, it's a five-member board, we're going out and advertise for that. Also, the architectural review board is a five-member board, and we'll also be going out to advertise for that. So with that, I'd like to have a resolution to allow the mayor to advertise for two ZBA members, five ARB board members, and five ethic board members. Five ethic board members. Have a motion on that, please?
I'll take that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Where are we going to advertise for this?
Well, we can advertise on the, what's it called? The, the old Atlantic Post, that's on. We can advertise there, we can advertise on Facebook, we can advertise on our webpage, and we can go as far as adding it to the other social medias that are around Washington ville, like with the people and the, what's that other one that we were talking about the other day?
Friends of.
Friends of.
Washingtonville.
Washingtonville.
Washingtonville community.
Right.
There's three different ones. Can we also do a robocall for that?
Sure, you can do a robocall, absolutely.
We now have a official Facebook page as of last night.
So this way, not everybody's on social media.
Right. Let me just check one thing before we get into that.
That is our official newspaper.
Yeah.
Well, the Times out, right?
Time is, well, that's good, that's our official newspaper for sale. Let me just check the dates here and just want to see. So for those boards, thinking we could get any response by April 29th. Gives almost two weeks to respond. That would be. Okay, so the resolution to reread would be to allow the mayor to advertise for two ZBA board members, five ARB members, five ethic board members, and to have responses back to the village by 4/29 via mail or via email, and we can supply that email address to, probably use yours, Christine, as a focal point. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. The planning board moratorium committee chairperson will be Bonnie Franzen from Nelson Pope and Voorhees. The, somewhat of our board is really just a group of volunteer residents that are part of the committee, and that can, that won't really change. There's some people that have chosen not to come back as we've received some phone calls, so we might even advertise for that one more time and see if they're in more interest or some of the people that decided to step aside and maybe want to come back for whatever reasons, so. With that, can I have a form of a motion?
You need a motion, huh?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Professional Services Attorneys for the Village Resolution Retaining the Services of Friedrich Nugent and McMc, what was that company?
McMcCartney.
McMcCartney. As Attorneys for the General Services Village Board of Appeals and Planning Board. Have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Resolution Retaining the Services of Hawkins, Delafell, and Wood for long-term bond offering involving Security Exchange Commission and rating agencies. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Resolution Retaining the Services of John E. Bach and Leonard Kessler as Village Prosecutors. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Accountants for the Village Resolution Retaining the Services of PKF O'Connor and Davies as Accountants for the Village of Washingtonville. Have a form of a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Engineering for the Village Resolution Upon Execution of the Agreement is in a form that is acceptable to the Village Attorney, retaining the services of part engineering for regular Village Engineering Services, including appearances at Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board Meetings for general issues, and for engineering review of submittals. Field project reviews for which are reimbursed by the applicant and engineer, and engineer for the Building Department for all applications. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. For, there is a, let's see, Planner for the Village Board Resolution Upon Execution of the Agreement that is in a form acceptable to the Village Attorney, retaining the services of Nelson Pope and Voorhees as certified licensed planners for the Building Department, Village Planning Board, Zoning Board. Planner will review all submitted applicants, or applications, I'm sorry, for correct zoning and scope before submitting to the Building Department. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes three zero. Financial Agency Resolution Designating Unistat as our official financial bank on agency for the Village of Washingtonville, year 23 to 24. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second, please?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Bond Attorney Resolution Designating Hawkins, Delafell, Bond Attorneys for the Official Bond Counsel for the Village for 2023-24. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Insurance Agency Resolution Designating Marshall Lynn Sterling as our official insurance agency for the Village for the year 2023 to 24. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
We can also shop this before the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already reached out to a set, a different company, I'm trying to remember their names, the insurance company. They were here, I think, almost two weeks ago, they came here the first week, we were in office, they gathered information, and they're gonna get back a little bit of figures and numbers.
Sorry, I'd like to shop things.
Yeah, me too. Designating, let's see, a resolution Designating TD Bank for the official.
We need to do the motion, well, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
We, we just.
Any discussion? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Thanks, Susan. Resolution Designating TD Bank as the official depository for the Village Funds for 2023-24. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Official Newspaper Resolution Designating Times-Harold Record as our official newspaper for the Village for the year 2023-24. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Social Media Resolution Designating Village of Washingtonville Website and Facebook. The Village of Washingtonville will be one, um, let me back up a second. So we have our Village Website, and the Facebook now is going to be named Village of Washingtonville 10992. Correct?
Yeah, there's a dash there, I don't look at that, I just remember to search, but.
Can you guys speak up a little louder, because just for instance, when you're watching the video at home, can't hear, can barely hear.
Okay. Yeah, we're working on an audio system, we're just trying to.
Just say it, like.
Yep.
Yeah, speak up a little louder.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, so, just to repeat that, the resolution Designating the Village of Washingtonville Website and our Facebook Village of Washingtonville hyphen 10992 page as our official media for community updates and Village for 2023-24. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And that will conclude our reorganizational comments there. We do have a resolution, so, and do I need to read this entire?
I think, in regard to the municipal legal rep agreement? I think that's already been passed and approved, right?
Right.
So there's certainly no reason to reread it.
Passed.
Okay, right. Okay, so just for the record, the municipal legal representation agreement for attorneys has been passed, and we have our legal resolution that would be in our file. So we're also, we'll be advertising for a beautification committee, so we can make a resolution that we advertise for beautification committee members. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
There, the previous committee, is it dissolved? I thought there were still some members that were on that committee?
No, the beautification.
I believe that she was running, she was the chairperson, I believe, of that committee. I'm not sure who was even on the committee, I can't find any records. But we can certainly do a little, you know, background check to see if there's anybody out there, and maybe if they see it, they'll call the office and let them know that they were part of it. Because we are planning on getting our flowers out there within the next two weeks, and it would be helpful to, you know, if there is that committee available, then we can certainly have them involved in it by all means.
How many people we looking for?
See whoever volunteers would be great, because, just for an example, we have the downtown area, we have about thirty-four planters. Never mind a little bit of work around what we're doing here at the Village Hall, so more volunteers, the better. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Also, a resolution noting the Electronic Recycle Day is April 29th at the Blooming Grove Highway Department. Hours are eight to twelve?
Correct.
Between eight and twelve on April 29th. And again, that's all for electronic, computer, printers, those types of devices. Refrigerators and air conditioners are kind of welcome, but they, if you don't remove the freon legally by a certified air conditioning type person, then the company that's taking the equipment will be charging you a fee. And you, is that like twenty bucks?
Twenty or twenty-five.
Yeah. So just as an FYI on that, but, so just to note that, we'll have a motion on that, please?
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution to lift the water restriction that was in force la, ended last year. We couldn't find any record where it was lifted, so we're doing that tonight.
Cleaning up.
So have a motion, please?
Motion. You got it?
I'll second.
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Motion passes three zero. Also, in front of you, have a Facility Use Request Form for Washingtonville Little League Softball. This is for the girls' softball team, or the field down at Woodfield. So, let's see. So we want a resolution to adopt and authorize a facility use form to be rented to the Washingtonville Little League for softball games and practices from April 1st to July 15th at Woodfield Park. On Mondays through Fridays, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and on Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then Sundays, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Chris can put that on the side so we can reach out to Paul?
Yes.
Let him know. And just as an announcement for the cleanup that's happening on the 22nd, the Kiwanis Club is also involved, but they kind of are doing a bunch of different projects in the village. And so they'll be out at different areas, but they're meeting at Burn Allen Park at 9:00 AM, and to be finished up approximately around noon, if anyone is interested to going out with that group. Okay? If anyone needs any further information, they can call Lena Spear, 845-728-1376. Thank you. Also, the Kiwanis, this is as an announcement, the Kiwanis Club is involved in a book program, so they call it, basically, if you have or got children's books. If you have children that have outgrown their books, where they do some clean, spring cleaning, please consider donating the books to the Washingtonville Kiwanis Club. Books are available for redistribution at the Country Kids Pantry. And if interest, books can be picked up by the members of the Washingtonville Kiwanis Club at your porch or front steps. Again, to call Lena at 845-728-1376. Thank you. Next is a resolution to advertise for a deputy clerk, two zoning Board of Appeals Members, five Architect of Culture, five Architectural Review Board Members, and five Code of Ethics Board Members. Motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. So, again, we'll use the paper and we'll use all our social media to get that out there. And also, just to add to that resolution, that we would like everything back by 4/29 as well. Resolution Letter of Intent to Advertise for Two Village Trustee Positions. Could also include to have that information or letters of intent back to us by 4/29.
And robo-call it?
And we can robo-call that as well. Okay. Have a motion, please?
A motion?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I just want to make sure that the audience understands, when we appoint the two trustees, it's only to fill in the terms that are currently existing. So next year, they would, if they want to keep the position, they would have to run for it.
All right. All right. Just to reiterate the announcement for the BG Clean, again, from April 22nd to Saturday, and if there's rain or shine, I guess, is it Saturday? Waiting for Saturday, 22nd and 23rd, they're doing it two days?
Clean, the official cleanup is the 22nd.
Okay.
Some volunteers work through to the 23rd.
Okay.
We will pick up roadside bags on the 22nd.
Right.
And then again, the following Monday. So it'll be, what, the 24th?
24th. Got it, okay. So you get your free cleanup supplies at the Blooming Grove Town Hall, 8:45 to 4:00 PM, the week of April 17th, and Saturday, 8:30 to 10:00, at the, again, at the Town Hall. And then leave, leave the field bags on the roadside by Sunday in the afternoon, and then the track, the trash will be picked up either that day or the following day on Monday. And that'll be the same situation here in the village. Thank you. This is just another announcement, that the Lions Club is redoing a recycling collection day that'll take place on May 11th between the hours of 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM at Burn Allen Park. It'll be in the parking lot, that is the extension off the main lot, as an FYI. Next is a resolution for a Facility Use Request Form to be issued to the Hudson Valley Hot Rods on Friday nights from April 28th, 2023, to September 29th, 2023, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:30 PM at the Village Municipal Lot located at 29 West Main Street. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Chris, can you also put that, we can notify Paul Neiman?
Yep.
Thank you. We have another Facility Use Request Form from the Hudson Valley Hawks, Authorized Facility Use Request Form for the Hudson Valley Hawks Baseball Games to be held at Woodfield from April 2nd through October 1st on Sundays between the hours of 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. So I'm going to put this on hold until we can verify, like, I would like to do a vote, but we need to verify that this isn't interfering with the girls' softball. Right now, they're saying Sunday's from 10, and the girls' softball is from eight to one, so there are definite coursing, coursing lines. So can I have a motion?
The table?
No, a motion to move forward, but we'll straighten out the hours.
Okay.
Just it, so, just, so it's Monday, we'll have it, you know, have it fixed by next week, or by Sunday, for it.
So, motion to accept subject to time changes in the scheduling.
Perfect. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Okay. Okay, the next is a resolution to purchase, purchase the Edmonds Financial Software, which is a financial package that will take care of our general ledger, AP, revenues. It currently is not being supported on any kind of software application, and it hasn't been going backward, trying to follow the paper trail on this, but it looks like for the last five to six years, no financial application has been used on a computer, other than a variety or a portion of QuickBooks. But it's not a fully developed application, they're printing checks from it, more or less, but tracking revenue versus budgeted versus expenses is, is not very difficult to track at this point. So we need this software. The good news about this software, it's a very popular software in other municipalities that are currently helping us out through some financial, you know, arrangements and doing some budgeting for us, and is, they use the same software. So it'll be transparent in the process. We hope to get this system up within six to eight months, hopefully sooner, it all depends on the schedule, but we need to get this up and running as soon as possible. So with the resolution to, again, that's been presented, do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Okay, so I will sign this agreement based on that, and we will email this agreement over to Edmonds, and get the process moving ASAP.
Is there a cost attached to that, Mr. Mayor?
Is there a cost? Yeah, not to exceed forty-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Thank you.
And what that includes, this is a remote hosted software package in the sky, so we don't have any hardware to worry about, anything like that. But the software services subscription is seventeen-six, the hosting services is three thousand, professional services of implementation is twelve, and conversion services is eleven. And that's the first year, and then based upon, let me see, make sure I have the right number for you, seventeen-seventeen, hosting. So the annual prescription, subscription for the, moving forward from year two to three will be seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars, as far as maintenance is concerned. Yep, Bob? Yep, two questions. How many, how many users does that handle, and does it include training for as many users as we're gonna have? Yes. And again, the good part about this is that the people that are helping us are using that system, so there is, it's a hosted system, and the people that we're using either from Orchley, and folks that are helping us from the town are, they've been using the system for years and really understand it. So what we plan to do is implement this thing, hopefully on a fast track, then we can use a template by the codes that have been developed by the government, and we can just build these tables, plop them in, and get, hit the ground running as quick as we can. Because I want to be able to start this system as of April first and moving forward. Everything that was done on paper previous to that, or whatever was on QuickBooks, still needs to be captured, and all of that, we're setting up to have audited, so we can try to figure out the paper trails, because it's, there's, we're not connecting a lot of dots. We're spending a lot of time and energy and money on trying to figure out where everything is from a regular standpoint.
Payroll services.
Everything.
We're paying out of outspiders and to do payroll services, this will do that, it will allow for tax payments to be done online, and I believe we can also do the water and food billing online.
Yep. Yeah, the same thing, I broke it out a little bit, but...
In the end, it'll be cheaper.
I'm sure you want it. Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. All right, so we'll sign this and get that moving first thing in the morning. Next would be a resolution to authorize public assembly permit for the Kiwanis Club on Earth Day to clean up the Burn Allen Park Woodfield Skateboard Fireman's Memorial Park on, on April twenty-second between the hours of eight thirty and twelve.
Which we've kind of already passed.
Right. Well, we passed that, they, that was more of a notice, but they gave us an assembly permit just to be covering their bases, which is appreciated. So I just have a motion on that.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And moving forward, these things are gonna require sixty days' notice, so we're not playing catch-up like this.
Right. And that kind of brings us into the next resolution, which is to authorize a public assembly permit to the Kiwanis Club for Flags of Heroes Day to be held at Fireman's Memorial Park on Saturday, September ninth between nine AM and ten thirty AM. Have a form of motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Discussion?
I would like to hold off on this, simply because last year, there was some controversy that the family members of the fallen firefighters did not want sales going on around the memorial that close to nine eleven.
It didn't, it wasn't just the sales either, it was, they didn't want the flags.
Yeah.
We can't, I can't hear.
Can't hear you.
It was, the sales were part of it, but there were issues that the families did not even want the flags.
Sales of what?
Oh, well, they were, like, supposedly, there were kiosks that were set up, but it wasn't just that. It, they didn't want the entire kubla surrounding it, they wanted it, it to remain just for their family members.
Asile, more solemn than festive, and that came at the request of the families that the memorial represents.
All right, so let's make a motion, we can table it, and then have further discussion with the Kiwanis Clubs. Okay?
So, yeah.
Make a motion to table?
Make the motion to table for now?
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, we'll reach out to them and see what the situation is.
Reach out to John Salka too, because he's someone who is in touch with the families.
Next is a resolution for the authorize public assembly permit for the Kiwanis Club for a pumpkin and concentamom fundraising to be held at the Virtuance Park on Sunday, September seventeenth between the hours of seven thirty AM and four PM. And motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
What was that?
Seven thirty in the morning.
Seven thirty in the morning to four PM, it's an all-day event.
Sorry, you guys are whispering, and I can't hear.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's more the issue.
Um, question on that? Are we allowed to do things as early as seven thirty? That's a residential neighborhood. I thought, Sundays, you weren't supposed to have activities before eight AM.
Not aware of that, you can't be operating.
They're not having a ban.
What?
They're not having a ban.
No, I'm just...
It's just...
No, there's nothing that I'm aware of that would prevent anybody from doing.
I mean, listen, I think it's great that they're doing it, it's a great fundraiser, I just, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, and that's like...
Bagel store's right there, people go in and buy bagels early.
So you, everybody's okay with it now?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Just asking.
Yeah. All right. Anything else to discuss, you guys?
Excuse me, ma'am?
All in favor?
Okay. Aye.
Motion passes three zero. We can let Kiwanis know about that one as well? Thank you. Okay, just a second here. Okay, I also have a resolution to pay village warrants.
Make a motion?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a, maybe just a comment update. So, this is a policy change that we, we really just reinstituted for, for the departments. We are meeting every Wednesday as, as department heads, we met last week to put a procedure in place that had been in place previously, and that is how to submit a bill and a voucher to get the approvals through the processes. So we're proud to say this is the first check run that went out in the summer, probably for general, I think it's in the area of two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. Water and sewer also went out, but they were under twenty thousand each. But we're now utilizing, again, the folks, the finance people that have been helping us, and we put this policy together, and department heads have been great in following the process, and we thank them very much. And again, this is just the first step in, you know, reviewing and going over all the financial processes. So again, this is our, our first check run, and we will be paying bills the fifteenth and the thirtieth or thirty-first of the month, on a regular basis, and warrants to be approved, approved at each meeting. So, thank you. Did we, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Through resolutions for Kiwanis Clubs. Okay, next would be, what we'd be doing on a monthly basis is kind of a liaison or a committee report from each trustee on highlights of things that they've been working on, just to keep everybody abreast. So, in any given direction, is there anything that you have to...
Um, yeah, so, I have met with police chief, and got over, you know, their department, they currently have their, part-time officers are out of contract, so we're working to start those negotiations. We've also met with the DPW, and all the guys over there, got to meet them, we also found out that they too are out of contract, so once we get the police squared away, we're gonna be starting on the DPW contract to keep, you know, we want to keep employees happy, and when there's no contract, it creates, you know, a bad atmosphere, so we want to get that nipped in the butt as quickly as possible. It also saves the village the expense, because the pay raises are given, now we have to find a way to cover back pay. We also had, all three of us had here, it was a public meeting, we asked the Chamber Commerce to have their ma, their committee and their, their members come in, and we sat around and we had a nice roundtable discussion with them, trying to find out what some of their wants and needs are, and how can we help keep, you know, our businesses in business. One of the things that was discussed that they would like to see is more signage indicating where there's public parking, so we'll be working over the next couple of months with the DPW to maybe get that, a little bit more out there, so when people come to visit Washingtonville, they know where they can put their car safely.
Good. Anything else?
We went into about beautification downtown, getting the planters back up.
All right. Flag, the flags will be installed shortly, right? Then planters, we'll also be looking at some maybe additional benches, some of the benches, especially at Burn Allen Park, the bases seem to have been maybe bent over time, and I'm not sure if they're repairable, but we'll need to take a look at that, because a lot of people are really utilizing the playgrounds, and there really isn't a lot of places to sit, either that or, you know, go with picnic benches or something to that effect. So, all of that's being looked at. Dawn, do you have anything you want to discuss? Just talk about it.
All right. We, you know, we're in the middle of a moratorium right now. We thought that the six months, we know that can be extended for two six-month extensions, we're currently working on the comprehensive plan, the moratorium actually, the next six-month period would be June first. There was some debate whether this was filed with the county, I know the state holds it, and I understand that all we need to do to extend it is to, we can do that as a board by resolution, and it does not require a public hearing. So we are looking to do that by June first. I'm currently working on our website, I met with the webmaster, we had some issues, we lost our official Village Facebook page as of yesterday, we, we started a new one, we could regain the one that we had, so I will put it out there, Tom mentioned it earlier, so people can start looking on that, it is linked to the webpage, you can click on the link from our webpage, you can also click on the Facebook page, and it will bring you to our, back to our webpage, so we can put some announcements out on that. I had a couple of residents re-judge, I don't know if it's, so don't worry.
Yes, sure. Just talk about it.
There was a suggestion about a possible mayor state of the village, an annual type of a gathering, maybe an event with vendors, activity, something to draw people in, possibly at the winery, maybe call it a village day, just a thought. Someone was interested in cost analysis of services from Bloom, that Blooming Grove provides regarding the, where our tax money goes, I know it's available somewhere.
Sure. All right. I mean, the first one, I think, would be a good one, because we're gonna be meeting with Martha, who, Barrera from the Wolden Bank, who's kind of taken the lead, I think, at this point on the event committee, so if there's anything from that type of discussion, I think if we're gonna continue it, we need to just talk to her about it, and get in contact with the people that are recommending it, and see, see where we can go with that.
We also talked about whether we should take that on as a village, the events.
Right.
They need volunteers, that's the biggest downfall right now.
Yeah, so a little bit on the event committee, that was a spin-off of Everybody Remembers Placemaking a few years ago, so that piece of the placemaking survived, but apparently they are a status where they are really, I want to say, maybe a not-for-profit, but they can do their own fundraising, they're kind of a separate entity. So what we were thinking of doing, and we talked to Martha on Wednesday, is that we were looking for basically having that event committee come underneath the umbrella of the village. So, and I think for, you know, for the village, I think that would work out really well, I'm not sure if they still want to raise money, and that's gonna be the discussion of, you know, the money that they raise, what they spend it on, and again, they're kind of dotted line to us right now where they're doing things. Other than that, if they became a regular committee, then it would be under the umbrella of us, and then things that they would be working on would be monitored, controlled, and, and brought together by us, because there's a number of different sections out there between the chamber, the event committee, the village, and everybody's got their own projects and, and plans and things to do throughout the village and the town, so we just want to make sure that it's obviously coordinated when we get through this. Okay?
Try not to have five events in one month, and then nothing for six months.
Right now, there's a calendar out, you know, it's tentative pending, I guess, permits at this point, and volunteers, because there's seven events that are planned between now and the end of the year, but, look, if you went to Rabbitville, and anyone that went, there were hundreds and hundreds of people there, and it was a great event, but behind the scenes, it was scrambling, they were really shorthanded, so...
Yeah. And that's, that's a good point, we should really just do a shout-out to the volunteers that did Rabbitville this year, because it was packed, and, you know, even though it was a little chaotic behind the scenes, they did a great job, and, and the kids had fun, and that's really what it's about, so...
These events are great for our community, they do, they shine a very positive light on it, however, we have to also take in consideration that there's a cost that the village bears with that, so, you know, and it's a burden on our police, on our DPW, so all this needs to be, all these moving parts need to be put together well in advance, and we need to make sure that, like Donna said, volunteers are the key to it. I mean, they were lucky that they had the Honor Society, I believe, came, and ROTC helped out with Rabbitville.
Yeah.
I mean, people that weren't even volunteering that day volunteered, so, but again, it was a rainy, so things that were supposed to happen on the original date didn't happen. The other big thing that came up when we met with the businesses were, was the parking. That was probably one of the biggest issues that the business owners felt had trickled down to them. They also mentioned what the events that took place over at Burn Allen, they felt, can we do a little bit more over downtown?
So, I want to, do want to mention, the incident reports are coming in, we do see them, and they are passed forward to the correct departments for it, I know I just got two today. Sorry, Chris, one will be coming your way.
So that concludes our portion of the agenda, now we turn it back over to the public comment, if anybody has anything that they would like to talk about.
This is your chance, let it loose, folks.
Maureen, state your address.
Maureen Dvinco, seven Maple Court, Washingtonville, New York. Couple questions. First of all, your Facebook page, is that an admin, like the private pages on We the People and whatever?
We set it up through the webmaster.
Is it a pri, is it a public page, or?
It's a public page.
Or do you have to wait for someone to approve your post?
Public.
It's public.
Public.
All right. Okay, my second point is, when you as a board are posting things on Facebook, can you post them on a public page, whether it be your own, or whatever?
Cross-posted?
When you post it on a private page, it's not shareable, there are a lot of people that are not on We the People, Washingtonville Community, whatever, that don't see these things, and they're asking questions, and you can't share your flyers, like Cleanup Day, the Village Yard Sale, a lot of things that have been posted are not shareable.
This one's public, so on those pages, they're not shareable, because those are private pages.
I know, that's my point. You're posting them on private pages that are not shareable, and I, I can find them on any page where they were.
The new page is a hundred percent public, so that is shareable.
So it's not gonna be where you're gonna have to post it and wait for someone to approve?
No.
No.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, my second is the Memorial Day Parade. Is there a budget for that from the village?
There is a, there is some, let me take a look at the number, but there is a budget, yes.
Could you let me know? Getting a very good response from a lot of the groups, a lot of the groups that haven't marched in the past year or so, but I think it's gonna be really good. I've contacted for the refreshments, but I just need to know how much, because the tent might be a little costly.
Do you have an approximate budget at this point?
I'm really, no, no.
Sorry, no.
I, maybe $2,000, $3,000. I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure.
It's like seven that they had in celebrations.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Also, this year, the, there's not one person that's the grand marshal. The VFW as a whole are going to be the grand marshal, and I'm working on a flatbed with railings that we can put chairs on for the guys that can't march, but we will be recognizing all of the veterans as the grand marshal this year.
That's great. They deserve it. That's really good.
John Staganga may have something, because I know...
Yeah, I'm working with, we're pretty sure we have something. I'm just letting you know. We need, we probably need a couple, actually. You know, like those, even the hay trailers?
Yeah.
You know, with the, I still want to have his chair fall off or whatever.
Sorry.
And we'll be stopping the parade for 10 minutes. There was some complaints in the past that when NiPAC does their dance in the middle of, you know, the center of the village, the rest of the parade continues, and everybody thinks that it's over, and then 10 minutes later, the rest comes down. So we're stopping it at a certain point. I'll talk to you, Brian.
Chikwichi.
It's Monday, the 29th.
Monday, the 29th, yeah. Yeah, so that's all pretty much organized.
If they're riding, we definitely get to ride in the beast. I had said to Tom, my Jeep, I said, if you can get some of the guys to take off the top indoors, village officials can ride that instead of walking.
And we'll be having the picnic at the end of the parade. At Memorial Park.
Good. Good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Anything else from anybody else? Okay, if not, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening. Appreciate it very much. Have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
No discussion, I'm assuming. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass three zero. Okay.
Yes. Maureen?
What?
I wanted to introduce you to one of your...
Hi, how are you?
Nice to meet you. I'm Dave McCartney.
Maureen. Mo, whatever.
Mo, okay.
My friend's calling me Mo.
You were the chairperson of the...
DBA, yeah. So I'll get you the dates. I have the dates for everybody, if you don't.
Okay.
For when they were appointed.
Yeah, that's right.
And I, and any information that you need, any files? We won our lawsuit because I have very good files.
Yeah, what, you have 178 or you have...
Yeah, yeah, well, it went up to the Supreme Court.
Okay.
We were, one Nicole, they wanted to make it into a two-family. It had previously been a childcare facility, and...
How do you turn this thing off?
I don't know.
Unplug it. That's what I do.